Thank you, everybody, for coming. We really appreciate it. We are just two parents also juggling sick kids on break right now. So forgive us if we are a little bit discombobulated, but, you know, we're doing our best here. So I'm Sarah Taylor. My name has been on the poster everywhere. I'm actually a newcomer to Crawford. I moved here in August. My in-laws have lived here for 25 years. They just moved to Delta, as seems to happen fairly frequently. And I used to be a college educator. I have served on many committees. I have previously been a school board president of a micro-nature school in the previous state where I lived. So that's probably the reason why I kind of jumped on board here and was like, "All right, let's do this. We can come together. This is not over yet." So we're trying to gather community support. And so today, we're going to talk about sort of where we stand, what's going on, how the board has responded to our pushback, which has been very effective. And then I'll give you a little bit of information that I gleaned from sort of the preview of what's coming in the community meeting next week, which I encourage everyone to go to because the community presence is going to be so important there. So this is Dominic Brote, and you can introduce yourself.
Hey, everyone. As Sarah said, I'm a parent of two children at the Montessori school. I have two preschoolers there, one in both classes. I'm just really a big believer in public education. And when I heard that the school was potentially leaving, leaving our town without a school, I just really thought it was an injustice to our town, really to our schoolchildren. And it really felt like a gut punch. So that's why I started posting online. If any of you know me, that's probably where you saw me. It's really heartwarming to have all of you guys here. We weren't sure how many people were going to show up. We weren't sure what reaction we would get. Sarah's been tremendous. She really has been phenomenal in organizing all of this.
Oh, thank you.
She reached out to me. She reached out. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm suppo-- okay. We don't know what we're doing with the microphones.
We have microphones. I'm so sorry.
We are not professionals.
So Sarah came up to me after I started making posts, mainly asking for the community to get involved, to email, to just, in general, let the school district and superintendent know how we feel about this, how you feel like it's going to impact you, your children, and your community. And I just really want to say thank you to everyone that showed up. It really means a lot to both of us. It means a lot to everyone at the Montessori school. And I don't think our children are grasping it, but I'm sure it would mean a ton to them to know what we're doing here. So just thank you, everybody.
Yeah, we're trying to keep the kids in the dark for as long as possible, yes. All right, so thank you for coming. We're going to pass around a few things. We have a sign-up sheet, mostly to get numbers as well as names. And if you want to put your email address down, it's optional, but you can access the community document where some of the points that we're going to be making tonight have actually-- we've actually researched and found data to support some of the points. And they're really fully fleshed out in a Google Doc online that everyone can access. So if you want access to that, I will gather all of your emails and send that around. So I'm just going to pass in a sign-up sheet. There's going to be multiple things that get passed around. So thank you for your patience with that.
Thank you.
All right. So what we want to say to begin with is sort of like what the situation is and where we're coming from. And so that is that Governor Polis has proposed 100-- almost $150 million a budget cut. Is it billion? It's a million. A lot. A lot of money, budget cuts. And the budget cuts are coming from a change in how we get funding per student for all of the school districts in the state. And so previously, it's been a four-year average, meaning like the enrollment over four years, we get a certain amount of money for the number of students who enroll. And now he wants to change it to be like other states, but it's still devastating for Colorado, so that we only get money based on the students who enrolled the year before. What that does is it makes us have to like jump around and be very reactive to any kind of changes, which is especially difficult for rural communities where we have a lot more volatility in our enrollment. So that's where it's coming from. It's not coming from the district. The school district is-- the Delta County School District is having to respond to that. And so they're looking at, how can we deal with this? This is happening across the country. The rural schools in the country are all having a difficult time. So we're not the only ones, if that's like a silver lining. So initially, on January 27th, all of the parents received a letter from the district stating that there was a possibility of relocating one or the other of the two alternative schools in the North Fork Valley, the North Fork School of Integrated Studies, or NIFSS, and our North Fork Montessori at Crawford. Right? So there was this possibility of moving one or the other schools to the other campus for budget savings, primarily because of looking at operational costs for buildings. Right? So we all got that letter and kind of went into an uproar. Right? We're like, "Oh, okay, what's this?" So that was when we started posting to gather stuff. And so they said in that initial letter that they were possibly going to vote on February 27th, which is two days after the community meeting that they're presenting stuff in next week. And so we've pushed back a lot, and the board has been very responsive. They have also been-- and the superintendent. So they have been very responsive to us and very appreciative, at least what I have heard, of Montessori and Crawford folks for being respectful and polite in that pushback. You know, I'm pushing back really hard, but I'm being polite too. Right? So it's important to do that. And so they have now said that they are not voting on the 27th, so they have delayed that. We don't know when they're going to vote on what the options are, but they also are now looking at all of the options, which wasn't clear in the letter that they sent out. So they're looking at all the options, which are, according to the work meeting that I went to on February 13th, so last week, they're looking at basically no change, keeping the campuses as is, and taking a year to evaluate, which is probably our best option. They're also looking at moving Montessori to Peonia to share the other half of the NIFSS building because it has not been occupied for a little while, which is, you know, a fairly compelling argument, or moving NIFSS here to Crawford. Right? So those are the options.
And do we have room for that?
We do not have the data on whether or not we have room for that. The Crawford School has had a lot more students than they currently have. And so I don't know what the--
Capacity.
Thank you. The capacity of the building is. And so that would be part of the evaluation, which was not presented in the board's working meeting. So it's a piece of information that we don't have yet. And so those are all the options that are kind of on the table. There's also options to look at, how can they increase class sizes and, you know, increase to student-teacher ratios to get to the maximum level of efficiency? And they're applying that rule across the board to all schools in the district. So we're not the only schools that are getting that kind of information and trying to consolidate and save money. However, the North Fork Valley is consisting of three towns. It's not one city. And so it's not one school. You know, it's like, we're all 25, 15 minutes from each other. And so you can't just consolidate class sizes. So they're looking at this, and it's like, it looks like a little bit of a hot mess. Like, the other schools make more sense to consolidate and to save money a little easier. And we're more difficult because we have three towns and, you know, schools in all of those towns. So it is difficult, and so they're looking at all that. When I was at the work meeting, my impression-- and this is not what the board is saying at all-- but my impression was like, they're taking this very seriously. And no one is like ready to jump into like, "Let's just do this without information. We need more information." And so that's why I think a lot of us are pushing for, "Let's try to get them to evaluate for a year and let the community, parents, and, you know, everybody collaborate together, the two schools collaborate together, to find solutions that maybe aren't just the same rule that's being applied to the schools that are in the cities." Because it's a very different situation. Like, they're not rural like we are. Right? Okay. So that's kind of the situation where we are. And I kind of gave you a little bit of like, there's district-wide measures that are being applied. We don't kind of fit the template of what they're doing. They still haven't done any-- that they presented. So this was the preview. It could change by the meeting. But they haven't done any like analysis of like the district administration-level budget cuts. Really, they're looking at, how can we consolidate the class sizes? Is there any administrative places that are overlapping that we can reduce? And then they're also looking at the transportation savings. Right? So most of you probably know that our school has a dual purpose. And I think this is why it's really complicated for Crawford, is that we are the school that provides education for children in Crawford, and we are an alternative school. And because we're an alternative school, about a third of our students-- this is based on what the board showed us. Right? So about a third of our students come from Peonia, a third of them come from Hotchkiss, and a third of them come from Crawford. And so we're not just serving Crawford, but we also are serving Crawford in a capacity that we are not serving children in these other cities. Right? These other towns have other choices. Crawford doesn't have another choice. We're the only school here. And so that's why we're really kind of up in arms about this, because it is really impactful for our community. All right. So they're looking at the transportation. So they bus students in from Hotchkiss. They bus students in from Peonia. And that costs money. Right? I mean, that's--
They help them from here to the high school.
Absolutely. So they also-- I'm going to repeat what you're saying, and then I'll grab you two because I'm not going to catch you on the mic. So they're busing students from here to Hotchkiss. Absolutely. So there are students that go to the Hotchkiss at middle school, for sure. And some kids go to the elementary school. And I think they have a couple of kids going to Peonia K-3. And what were you adding?
The letters I got also that they were going to maintain blessings--
Yeah. Yeah.
--of letters that the administration stated about.
Yeah, I will get to that. Yeah, they stated-- and this was a big overview. They didn't give a lot of detail. So come to the meeting next Tuesday, because I think there's going to be a lot of questions about that. But they were stating that the savings would be that they're not busing students here from Hotchkiss and Peonia. But then they-- so they stated that they would save two bus routes, but they would have to turn around and make a bus route from Crawford to Peonia, which-- correct me if I'm wrong-- doesn't exist right now.
No.
It used to?
No, there's not one.
There is not one. Right, okay. That's what I thought. So really, it's a savings of one bus route. And they haven't stated whether they're still going to be collecting rural students in Crawford, bringing them to town, or if those students have to drive into town. I would assume that they would still be bringing the rural students in.
Oh, they should.
Yeah, agreed. I think that they will, but they didn't state that. That hasn't come out yet. So those are really good questions to bring to their community meeting next week. However, students who live in Fruitland Mesa or Mayer then have a commute to get to Crawford. And then it is 23 minutes from Town Hall to the NIFSS school building. Though that was presented as 17 minutes at the board's meeting. And so I did correct that. So hopefully, that will be corrected in the next meeting because those minutes add up. Right? Even if I'm speeding, I can't get to Peonia in 17 minutes. All right. So that's kind of the situation where we're looking at. We're in this unique situation because of the fact that we're an alternative school and we're the primary school for our community. Yes?
I was wondering, is the meeting next week, where is it going to be?
Absolutely. And so we'll say it again at the end. So the question was, where is the meeting going to be next week? The board's community meeting is on Tuesday, February 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hotchkiss High School. Right? I'm looking at all of my people who know. Right? Yes. Okay. North Fork, sorry. North Fork in Hotchkiss. Sorry. See, I have only lived here for six months, man. I just jumped in. Okay.
That's a good point. Go off that. Just slack.
Thank you. I appreciate the slack. All right. Okay. So some of the other things that I just want to give a heads up for is that we're going to see this probably in the meeting. And I don't know how deep they're going to go into it, but they were looking at-- they didn't explicitly make a case for this, but they were looking at, okay, if a third of the students come to Crawford, Montessori, from Peonia, a third of them come from Hotchkiss, and a third of them come from Crawford, they're kind of making a case for, well, it's kind of more expensive to have it in Crawford, and it's only serving a third of the students. So shouldn't it be moved to another place? Wouldn't that be more, you know, cost-effective and efficient? And it could be. It could be a little bit more cost-effective. And that doesn't mean it's good for everyone. Right? So that's where we're kind of building our case and want to take some input from you all to see, you know, what your ideas are. Yeah?
There's-- it's unfortunate that our education is being reduced down to money. I'd really like to know, number one, where Polis is going to spend $150 million--
Yeah. Wouldn't we all?
And number two, then I put the board on the hot seat and say, how much money you think you're saving, and where do you plan on spending this money?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And so that is a big piece. So the question is like, where is this-- where is this money going to go? And what's going to happen with the money that's saved? And I think that's a fair question. And I think a lot of us who are in-- like, who are writing to the superintendent and the board are asking for information about a full cost analysis of how much would we actually save from all of this? That was not presented in the preview of the presentation that they're going to give. They may add that. They may add that. I think they were going to add building operation costs because they didn't present that. And they were kind of holding that back because they didn't want to pit the schools against each other, I think is what they said. So I don't know how bad that is. I don't know what that means for us, but we will see. So yeah, we don't know that. Unfortunately, if you want to take action at the state level, you can call the governor. And the community document that we have has a message template that you could just call. And you can just read that template into a voicemail and then give them your address and say, "I live here." And then you can add whatever you want, you know, respectfully. So, you know, contacting the governor is great. He hasn't decided it yet. Right? Pushback matters. So I encourage you all to, you know, contact the governor. Contact legislatures-- legislators. Yeah. Was there a question over here?
I had a--
Yeah.
So you were saying a third of the students come from Hotchkiss and a third comes from Peonia. Well, if they move the school to Peonia, then there'll be a third coming from Hotchkiss and a third coming from--
Right. Yes. It is. Right? It is.
But it's not only the same cost, and they're pretty much the same last year's from there.
Yeah. So the comment was that if we move the school to Peonia, there's still a third coming from all of these different places. And so what is the actual cost savings? We haven't actually seen it. All I heard in the meeting was that they could eliminate two bus routes. But that didn't include the fact that we'd have to add a bus route from Crawford to Peonia. And they didn't show what the bus routes would be. And so it was like, it was a general, we would save money. We didn't get any information. Right? I know I'm not the only-- I'm double-checking with the folks that I see that were there. Right? That we didn't get that information. So this is a really good question to bring to the meeting next week if it isn't presented. Yeah.
Years ago, they tried to close a school when my daughter was a teacher there. And it was when it was a regular school. And they started checking on the taxes, property taxes people pay. And the people from around this area paid enough to support the school.
That is a great point. Are you writing that down?
Yeah.
Super. Okay.
This is our second or third time--
Yes, I know. I have heard that this is the-- Yeah. So this is not the first time that, like, Crawford School has been--
In jeopardy.
In jeopardy. I was going to say crisis. Good, you know, jeopardy sounds less scary.
Can you repeat that comment?
Yeah. So the comment was--
So the question or comment is, the last time the school was tried to-- was attempted to be removed, they took a look at the property taxes. And it was decided that, just looking at the Crawford community area, that we pay enough taxes here that we should be able to support our own school. And I think, well, that was the comment. And I think the larger question now is, does that hold true today? And what do those numbers look like?
Yeah, because many mines have closed, you know. That kind of makes a big concern.
But also, they're projecting that the mines are going to be reopened and there's some changes--
Sure. Sure. Unfortunately, we can't plan on the changes of bringing more people-- you know? It's-- you know? Yeah. I would also say that we have seen a fair number of families come in now that people are working remotely. Like, that's the reason why I can move here, is that my husband and I both work remotely, and we have kids. And we want to be involved in a small community. Like, that was our desire. Right? To be part of a community and to really be part of it.
And have a school.
And that has a school. Right? We moved here so our son could walk to school. Right? I used to drive three hours a day to get my kid out. And then I drove home to work. Right? It didn't work out very well. So I understand that that is one of those things, though. Okay. So I think what we'd like to do before we take some more comments, that are there any more questions on like the state of things? Before we talk about-- and Dominic is going to take it from here, and we may add this. These are like the-- these are the titles of long sections in the community document that have supporting data, which is, you know, just stuff that we're coming up with. And so we want to hear more from the community of what kind of data you have. But these are the kind of the key concerns we've identified, or maybe reasons why the school should stay in Crawford, at least if we're pushing back against a decision that's going to be made right away. This would-- you know, if we get a year to evaluate, we want to make a task force, which we'll talk about in a minute. And I want to gather names of folks who'd be-- want to be involved in that. But these are just some of the key points that we're looking at.
Cool. Yeah, so we're going to go over some of the key concerns we've gathered. Like Sarah said, these are outlined in that community document. So please, if you can, if you're interested, take a look at the document. These are going to be outlined better. I also have some printouts of some of these concerns that are a little more detailed. I'm going to leave them on the piano over here. If anyone wants to grab them, you're welcome to, if you want to use them for your own emails, for your own calls to the district. I think there are some really good points here. And then I want to hear-- we want to hear what concerns you guys have that we haven't captured yet.
Well, I'm thinking, so when they build all these new schools-- I was employed-- I was a manager at the lunchroom. And I knew kind of the big shot that they got to come in here to pass all this, to build these schools. And he said, "Well, we'll go ahead and build one at Crawford, but it won't be there long." And that's what the big shot said they hired to come in. So see, that's something that's been in the back of someone's mind ever since they built it.
I'm going to address that really quick.
Go for it. Yeah, absolutely.
I think that is a huge point. And I'm glad that you brought that up. Because that is something that I kind of noticed when I first moved here. Within a couple of weeks, there was kind of this talk about, "Well, the school used to be really good." Or like, lots of people really liked the school before. And then it became a Montessori, which I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding about what Montessori is. And I think that we can probably find good ways of integrating the school into the community. But it seems like there has been this undercurrent for a long time. And I can still-- I'm still reading between the lines at the board level of like, "Oh, can Crawford sustain a school? Does Crawford deserve a school?" You know, like, "Oh, are we just an inconvenience?" They're not saying that. This is my impression. So these are my words, not the board's words, to be clear. Because we have people from the press here. All right. Yes?
Going back, this school's been around since 2002, 2001. The success rate of people who fit to graduate here-- I know my son was one of the first ones. And they've all went out and accomplished college.
Yeah.
Mostly successful.
Yeah.
And I don't know if his other school was like it because it was up and down.
Right.
This school's had a track record. And it's established, and it's been rated number four in the state of Colorado.
Right.
So, you know, you can't just break something down because you want to ruin bus routes in different places.
Right. Right. All right. So the comment-- just in case you can't hear it. So the comment was like, "What about the long track record? Since 2002, of our students going on and doing good things and performing really well, we are like-- we win awards almost every year, if not every year." Right? And that has been a very consistent thing. And so breaking that down and relocating a school, is that not going to destabilize that in some way? Is that worth it? Is the small number of financial savings-- because the operating budgets and expenses for NIFSS and Montessori are the smallest in the district. Right? Right, it's not like we have multimillion dollar expense budgets. We're, we're both under a million dollars, and so we are the smallest. So yeah, is that worth it? That's a really good point, yeah. All right, so we're going to go on to some of the other ones that we've gathered, and then we're going to gather some, some more points that you guys have. And we will try to transcribe this also and make sure we add it to the community document. Or you're welcome to go in and add your own points to the community document as well. It's for anyone, anyone can write into it anonymously or not. Yep, you got some. Yeah, can we come back to you in just a moment after we get through these? Yeah, thank you, I did see that, yeah, thanks.
Cool. Well, I'll run through these, and then we're going to open it up to all of you guys after this. And it doesn't have to be just points we didn't cover here. If you've got something you want to, you know, talk to about one of these points, please, we'll document it. We'll make sure that it's shared. So some of the key concerns that we've identified while going through this process. With the proposed merger, we feel that it's contradicting the district's vision and Colorado's commitment to rural schools. That's been a big one that has been coming across for us. We've also seen, a lot of people are concerned that Crawford is an at-risk community where Peonya has more economic stability. And certainly taking away our schools is only going to exacerbate that, especially considering how much the school feeds into the other businesses that we have here. I mean, I can say, I personally, you know, I go to the coffee shop more often if I drop my kids off at school. Even things that aren't businesses. I go to the library more when I pick my kids up from school. All of these things are going to be, it's going to take a hit for us.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I heard that the library had a hard time in the past too, and the town had to come together and save the library. I don't know that, you know, I don't know how not having a school here would also affect that. Right, if you're taking, you know, let's just ship our kids out of the community, all of our kids. Let's ship them out, and then, you know, who's going to have time to go to the library if they all have to ride the bus home?
Absolutely. We're only open two days a week at the library right now. I don't, I personally don't have a whole lot of faith, faith that that's going to stay open for our two days when they take our school away. But, um, other concerns, we have the most at stake in this decision. We, as in we, the people of Crawford, we have more at stake in this decision than the people of Peonya. Not to say that they don't have things at stake, but if we lost our school, I do think we'd have a much higher impact to our town than Peonya would see if NIFSS was moved. Not that I want, and I want to be very clear, we don't want anything to happen to NIFSS.
No.
We're big supporters of all the schools here in the district. But we would be, it would be more negative for us than for them, unfortunately. Yes, absolutely.
Can I add to that too? And this goes to the one-third of students in the school coming from each of the three towns in the North Fork Valley. If you look population-wise, it's not equal. So the Montessori is serving about 42% of the non-adult population in Crawford. And so, you know, there's, we're serving a higher percentage of the proportion of the children in our city versus what we're serving in these other towns, right? Sorry, I keep using city and town. I used to live in a big city and other small towns. But yeah, that's a big piece of it, is that we're actually proportionally serving more of the Crawford children population than we are for these other towns. And so that's another reason why it has a much larger effect for us than it does on, on the other towns that have other schools as options.
Absolutely. And here's one, we're going to be talking about this one more. The, the financial justification for moving the school, we just haven't totally seen it yet. We understand that there are budget cuts coming. We understand the district is going to be facing budget cuts. But at this time, we haven't actually seen what relocating the school means for the budget. We haven't seen whether it'll improve the budget, whether it makes it worse. Obviously, the assumption is it's going to improve it. But there haven't been numbers that say what it looks like if we move to Peonya, if NIFSS moves here, if any of this. We, we were talking about the bus routes, but we haven't seen numbers for bus routes either. So I really, we're going to be coming back to this one. We, we don't, at this point, have the numbers to support moving the school. And on top of that, school relocation has negative effects on our kids. It just, it does, I, I can't imagine any positive way that this would impact our kids that are currently there and being forced to change their schools. Not to mention the burden that it's going to create on our teachers and the staff here at the schools. And I certainly can't speak for them, we have some of them in attendance though. So perhaps they can speak to it if they'd like to. But we, everything's in place here. And I can't imagine uprooting it and moving it is going to make anything easier for, for the staff here. The transfer to, oh, please, please.
I'm going to pause there.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's also plenty of research that says that, you know, so it's good to go to the board and the superintendent with research, because if you come in with an emotional argument, they're not going to pay as much attention. But if you come in with a logical argument, they're going to listen. I mean, they have to listen, because it's like, oh, well, it's something that you have to respond to, and the burden of proof is on them. And so we do know that like, non-voluntary moves or structural moves of schools are disruptive in both the short term and long term, and that they cause a decrease in performance in both math and English, ELA, or, you know, reading and writing and all that, right? So we also know that students who are most at risk, or who have learning differences, who have IEPs, who have developmental disabilities or delays, are also disproportionately affected by the kinds of disruptions that would be caused by a complete change in environment, as well as having a staff who's, you know, if we had to move this year, scrambling to make everything the same or similar to the way it is now in our current facility, right? And I have heard that in the past consolidations, that it was expected that teachers would work without pay over the summer to make that happen. And I just, I, I.
Ridiculous.
Yes, ridiculous, right? So like, and, and there are also, yeah, I think, I don't know if we have this as another point, that the buildings are not ready to be consolidated. There are remodeling and renovations that have to be done to both buildings. And so that, that would probably not be able to happen in time for an August, you know, merging. All right, so I just wanted to add those points. We're not just saying it because we feel it.
Yes. Some other concerns, we were talking about this one. We've been talking transportation. We're just not, they say that we're going to be saving money by doing this on transportation. We just don't know that that's true yet. It's, it feels a little misleading to me, there are arguments on this, but we're, we're waiting for more information on that. One of our last key points here is whether or not the shared resourcing of art, music, and gym justifies us moving our schools. The feedback we've been seeing doesn't seem to be that the community agrees that that is a good enough reason to be moving our schools. But like I said, we'll be opening it up, so please share your thoughts. And, and finally, we're going to be hammering this one home. We really think that we should see a one-year delay before making a choice about this. So that the school and the district can make a thoughtful decision with all the community input, that we can get the proper numbers, that we can make sure that if we're going to do something that is so disruptive, and hopefully we don't, but should something like that happen, that it's been a long thought-out process, that it isn't something that gets rushed and has long-term consequences to our children. So we're going to be talking about that one more and more. But we're going to be pushing, we're going to be asking that we could see a year delay. And if something like this happens, that the school just takes, the school district takes the time, the time that's necessary for such an important decision.
Yeah. And, and to the second to last point there, the shared resources. So just, just in case you aren't familiar, so the NIFSS is a Waldorf-inspired school, and Crawford-Montessori is a Montessori school, right? So they have different educational philosophies, different systems that build on each other that are very effective when used consistently. So the, the board is not, and the district is not asking the schools to combine philosophies. That's not there. However, when we start talking about the shared resources, like PE, like music, like art, that has been floated around, that wasn't part of the original proposal, but I've, I heard it come up in the board meeting. There are different philosophies for that, like music and art and physical education have different roles and different skills that are emphasized in each one of these philosophies. And so it's not as easy as saying, well, it's just music, let's just teach them, it's just art. Let's, you know, it's very different. One is very, you know, you know, skill-based, and one is very process-based. It's very different. And so someone, if there were going to be shared resources, which they mean people, teachers, right? That's what, that's what's being talked about here. There would have to be someone who could go from one to the other. And whether or not that's possible has not really been discussed. And so that's just like, that kind of gets in the middle there where it's saying, we're not going to combine the philosophies, but if you're sharing resources for these, you know, extra classes, which are so critical, because they're the ones that make students want to come to school, then we need to kind of think about what is that actually going to look like? Is that even feasible? Is that even part of what they're proposing?
Cool, yeah.
Okay, with, with that, so in the back, so, um, yeah, yeah, go ahead and take that.
So we're going to open this back up to questions and.
NIFSS has done nothing since its birth. And the Montessori is nothing but gone uphill. And the statistics are back to it. Right there in the air is whether there should be shared deals. In my opinion, let's go back to old school. You want the bus school to improve, you want the bus school to learn. Shut down NIFSS and spread the kids out throughout the district.
Okay, so officially, I do not have data to say one way or another. What we do have data on, so the comment was, hey, Montessori is doing a really good job. It's a really strong school. And I don't have data on how strong a school of NIFSS is, and I cannot comment on that. However, what they're going to say is that the Crawford community is not like, is, are there enough kids coming? Because what has happened, so, so their rebuttal to that, like, I don't think, nobody thinks that Crawford is, the Montessori is not a strong school. But the rebuttal to that is going to be, our numbers have been declining, why is that? And so I think there are answers that we could come up with to that, is like, we can talk about how good the school is, and I think a whole community can come together and be like, hey, let's, let's increase the narrative about the school as it's amazing, and our teachers are amazing, and they do like literal miracles with our children. My, we got here, and my son was, and I'm not allowed to talk about this explicitly, because he doesn't like me talking about his business, but. I'm trying, how can I say this without being explicit? He's done like a year and a half's worth of progress in a few months without being shamed, without feeling like he's having to work too hard. Like, I mean, it's absolute miracles. He's getting up at 5:00 AM to read chapter books, and I'm like, he's, you know, he's like a little boy that wants to run around and play and blow things up. So like, that's crazy. So I, I don't, and the board and the superintendent, the whole district knows that the Montessori is a really strong program. That is not in question. It really comes down to, do we keep continuing to have the numbers to support the school? So I, I completely agree with the point that the school is strong. I don't have any data about the, the NIFSS performance, I haven't looked into that. But I, I just want to say what the sort of retort to that is going to be. Now, that also said, enrollment is down across the district, district-wide. We are not the only ones that have enrollment down. Enrollment went down and has continued to go down since the pandemic, right? And it has never recovered, and that is nationwide. And so, yes, it's happening here, but because it's here and because we're rural, which means we have more transportation issues, and we're in the valley, which is like, we've got three towns and three sets of schools, it's more complicated. So there are these sort of district and nationwide trends that we're looking at. So thank you for your comment, appreciate that. And so, so before, we had a comment that was waiting patiently.
Here, I'll go. So, so we are going to open this up to comments, but to try and get you guys recorded, I do have a little microphone here, I'm going to try and pass it to you guys. If you guys don't want it, that's fine, we just have to repeat the questions, so we record them. So I think you had something you wanted to say in back, right?
Thank you.
Do I press it?
No, you just, oh, thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback on something that was said earlier and wondered if it was being tapped into yet, but maybe also them seeing the many generations of children that have gone through Montessori and successfully are thriving adults, whether, whatever their occupations are. We have a lot of them that come back to our community. We have a lot of them that we've seen graduate. I've been in, you know, within Montessori since 2009, and I just, I was the secretary for a while. So I see a lot of these graduates over the years, and I wonder if there's a way we could tap into that as well, and they could write in, or they could do something?
That's great.
Because we have so many of them that it's, they feel that their Montessori education is, was, and will always be fundamental to their successful lives. Because it, it really is something about that. It's like, it's a fundamental thing. And my three children were also part of that, that are out there in the world and living their best lives. So maybe we could do something like that.
I think, I think reaching out to alumni, alumna could be a great thing. And I think if the community can help us do that, I would be happy to gather. You can give them my email, and I would be happy to gather that information. I don't know how long we're going to have. If we have a year, I think that that could be useful. I also think that the, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because I have been on the other side of this, and it's all what, you know, how things are being thought about at the board meeting, is that they might say, well, the Montessori will still be fine and still do that, it'll just do it in Peonya. So, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, that was me.
Right, all right.
Yes.
All right.
Maybe we could have Monica or someone talk about it, but aren't, my understanding is that the Montessori is a certified Montessori school. And don't classrooms need to be certified in part of that? Or is that?
So I don't want to put the teachers on the spot for this, because we have press here, and so.
That's fine, I just, I'm just trying, because to me, if they are a certified classroom, if the teachers are forced to move, then there is an expense to then get the new classroom certified. And, you know, thinking about how all these upgrades just happened to the school here in Crawford, and how they're already certified, and just another burden on the Montessori school having to get these rooms certified again, if that is the case, I'm not 100% on that.
Yeah, I can answer for the early childhood program.
Thank you, Ms. Monica.
So, hi, everybody. I'm the director of early childhood and a teacher. And so there's a few things that I do feel like the district has overlooked for especially our preschool program. And we would have to get a license change. So that takes time. And so we have an early childhood license here at our location. And so that is something we'd have to do, for sure. There is not as nice of facilities at that building right now for early childhood. They have no playground, nothing. So we have a beautiful playground, and it was purchased with grants, and parents and staff are the contributors that got those grants and did the work. So just to get a playground like that would take so much time and effort.
Right, right, it's not free.
Yeah, and money, for sure. So then another thing I feel like the district is overlooking relating to our preschool is that our preschool has income. Fortunately, that income has grown with state support, especially UPK. And so our preschool is bringing in this year over $159,000. And they aren't considering our preschool when looking at our budget, but I'm afraid they're including our preschool teachers into the cost.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I did write a letter to the board and to Karen that I sent today that has this information in it. And so those are a couple things that I think are very important. I also think it's important that we have an innovation plan that was signed and agreed upon, that lasts until 2026.
Yes.
So we're a school of innovation with the state of Colorado and CDE, so that should mean something. And it states that we are in Crawford, so.
Yeah, and there could be legal ramifications for violating that contract. We don't know, we haven't completely looked into that. But yeah, that contract is really critical. She, I know that Karen, Karen is the superintendent, Karen Gibson, and I know she's aware of that. And I also reminded her of it last week, when I was like, hey, it seems like you're not ready to make a decision. I think you'll get a lot less resistance if we wait a year, right? Like, hmm, maybe, so, you know, it seems like they're there.
Yeah, and there's one more thing that I think is very important, is that our preschool has 29 students. That is 29 children we serve in the community, and we're in a childcare desert. And Crawford would be left without childcare.
Yeah.
The 29 preschool students we have bring our numbers up to a larger school than NIFSS, but they don't let us count our preschoolers. But it's children that feed directly into the school, and it's children that are part of our school.
Right, right, yeah. That's a really good point. And it gets really tricky, because when they're showing us the numbers in the, in the meeting, the community meeting next week, they are, you know, when they show the third, a third, a third, they are including the preschoolers in that, but then they're saying the preschoolers are not getting a state funding for the, you know, per pupil funding. So it gets, it does get complicated, so I'm super glad that you.
Right, so then we do need to take out those preschool teachers.
Yeah.
Salaries out of that budget, if, you know.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Monica.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson, I'm the mayor of Crawford. And I'm going to stand up so everyone can see me. Unfortunately, I can't see most of you, because I just developed a serious vision issue. I just wanted to say that the town of Crawford, and I'm pretty sure I can get our trustees on board to sign at least a declaration or a resolution to support the effort to at least postpone everything for a year. So our clerk happens to be here, so she, she's hearing this. And we'll be talking to our attorney tomorrow to see if we can, to get our trustees on board to at least send a letter to the district from the board of trustees. And I'm not speaking for all of them yet, but that will be our. All the trustees are very well aware of what's going on, and we have talked about it at, at our last two meetings. So I just want to let you know, and we can get together however you would like us to perhaps support that, that letter. Also, I just want to let you know, I've been a Crawford resident for 32 years, almost. All of our, all of our six children attended Crawford schools before it was Montessori. But now three of my grandchildren are coming from Peonya to attend Montessori. And our daughter-in-law is, is the new music teacher. And I can guarantee you that NIFSS was not one of their choices, but Montessori is. And we know some of the staff members, they are absolutely wonderful people. We are huge fans of Kami Bear. I don't know if Kami's here or not, but. Hi, Kami. Oh, thank you. And Bruce, Kami's husband, is our public works director. Unfortunately, soon to retire at the end of the year, but he's, they, even though they live in Peonya, they have a very strong connection to Crawford. So I just want to let you know that the town of Crawford will do everything we can to support your efforts to keep the school here in Crawford.
Amazing, thank you. Amazing. I, while we're taking questions, I want to just let you know, we've got a couple of things, other things to sign. If anyone hasn't signed the petition, yeah, we're going to pass the petition around. And so I'm going to start one here and then kind of in the middle, and so it's going to get around. Thank you for that. I'm just going to start it here with you. No one is obligated to sign it, I just want to make sure that's going around. I have two other things to sign up, I just don't want a bunch of people to leave. We're only at 5:51, so we're doing really good. Yeah, all right, we've got, yes, thank you, June.
Hi, I'm June, I'm, I'm one of the owners of the, of the Boardwalk.
You have to talk louder.
Well, I never do unless I'm mad.
Yell.
So I guess my question is for the district. In what universe, where are the studies that show that a 10-hour day, which is what this probably would turn out to be for a kindergartner or a first grader, is going to improve their academic standing and their ability and their scores?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know that, I think there are probably studies that show the opposite.
There are.
And I think we should be ready with those, but it's on them to show that this is in the best interest of our kids.
I completely agree. And they, they have had some success in the past with the, I know, there's, there's so much drama, y'all. I've only been here for six months, and I now know all of the details. There are so many factions and opinions, but, okay, so my tracking of this is that previously, the Peonya High School moved and merged with Hotchkiss, right? And, and so now I have forgotten the point about that. North Fork, I know, I'm sorry, it's North Fork. I am new, I know, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the, so, but the question was, that's a high school. Those kids have way more developed brains. Those kids can handle transitions better. Not perfectly, you know, it's like, you have to be 25, I'm a trained neuroscientist. You're 25 is when our brains are like, "You're an adult now. You can make rational decisions." We're talking about little children being shipped out of a community. That is totally different. And so, and June, you've brought that up before, and so I just wanted to hammer in that we're not talking about high schoolers having a longer commute. We're talking about three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, 10-year-olds, 12, how old are kids in sixth grade? You know, they're young, right? They're little kids. It's a, it's a much different thing than the high school.
It's a lot to ask for them to sit for so long.
It is a lot to ask for them to sit for so long. Thankfully, the Montessori way lets them move around more in the classrooms, but the buses are not Montessori buses. They don't have the alternative seating, right? Alright.
So, we keep talking about budget, and all I see about the budget is NIFSS and Montessori, the North Fork Valley. I don't see anything about the rest of Delta County. I mean, it's a fairly large district. You've got Austin, you've got Cedarage, you've got, I don't know, is it Latha part of it?
No.
So, you've got Delta, you've got all of those other areas. Where's their cost-cutting? Where's their integrating schools? Where's all their budgeting and their sacrifices that they all have to make?
I can speak to that. They are, they are reducing number of sizes across the board in all of the schools. They're trying to get to maximum number of students per teacher, and so they're cutting down on classes. They are doing it by reducing FTEs or full-time equivalent positions, basically by getting...
Like cutting staff?
Yes, yes, cutting staff and Cedarage. Yeah, I know. They're, because they're, that's the different, the difficulty of the fact that they're in one town, they have one school, they can just consolidate classes, and it's not that big of a deal, you know, well, it is when you're talking about whether or not teachers have jobs, but, you know, their, their goal is to like move teachers around so that everybody has an option to work in the district, which may or may not be reasonable. Cedarage is having more significant shifts and that they're proposing to move, I think, sixth grade into the high school, middle school campus. So, they are doing that, then they're going to reduce the number of principals by one and have two assistant principals. So, there are administrative changes that are happening. But the, the difficulty is when they get to us, the, they can't have the same template of changes. And so, that is where I think the year delay is good because like, we're two alternative schools. We can come up with creative solutions, right? Like, we don't play by the book, and that, that's like all they've got. Like, I watched this presentation and it's like, you know, it's just, "We're gonna do this here, and we want to try to do this here," and it's like, "It's not fitting. It's not fitting." And it's like, "Well, we need to come up with something else." So, it's a really good point to hear about what that is. They did show that in the presentation for the working group, and they will show that, but they're not showing numbers. They don't show any numbers about how much is being saved at each school. I didn't see any costs about that. So, these are good questions asked, like, why are we being asked to do something so disruptive when, you know, like, what are the other cost-saving measures that could potentially happen? Like, is this the only answer? And it seems like there's enough of us pushing back that it shouldn't be, but it's a, it's a good question. Yeah.
You said that they're integrating more students per class size, but they're still keeping the staff on just another position, is what they're trying to do.
That is their goal, yeah.
How are we like cutting costs at that point? All they're doing is raising student to teacher classroom. Is that just to appease the state for the funding, to make it look like there's more students there? Or is that actually something that's cutting costs?
So, it ultimately does cut the FTEs or the full-time equivalent positions. So, it's cutting salaries and benefits because approximately every year, they said they have about 20 people leave or retire or go to something else. And so, they're kind of counting on like shifting that around and basically not hiring new people. So, they're...
Again, that, that's a whole completely different scenario that would involve years' worth of stuff than just moving an entire school. Waiting for teachers to retire isn't saving budget or balancing a budget or making changes to a budget, it's just not hiring new people when that time comes.
Sure. Bring your questions to their meeting, because I can't answer it in the way that I would like to. I think these are really good questions. I think you should totally, please, are you coming to the meeting? Good. Because I'm not gonna ask the question. Oh, super. Right, okay.
We have one here, and we'll get to you next.
Hey, I was a former employee at the school. My question is, they combined the two high schools in the last few years, right, to save the budget, right? That was the whole point a few years ago, was to save the budget, to, to decrease spending on employees and transportation and keeping a building up and running. None of the taxes have decreased in the last several years, right? They've gone up. Property taxes haven't changed, they've gone up. Where is the money going if it hasn't gone down? If we're paying the same amount in property taxes, why is the money not allocated properly? Where is it going?
These are great questions.
Because that's the frustration you have, is like you've combined a school already to quote-unquote "save money." Where's the savings?
Yeah.
You spent $650,000 to rebrand a high school for new uniforms and a new, you know, they redesigned the whole track, the football field, the basketball courts, everything, got new uniforms. And, and that's all well and good, but that's not people's employment, and that's not people's kids going to school, like...
Yeah.
It just, I, it just seems wasteful. Like, where's the wasteful spending going?
Sure.
Because Crawford is a father's school from Delta, and, and I worked here for five years, out of sight, out of mind. We get the least of anything.
Absolutely.
And then when they look at budget cuts, we're the first one. Because they did this to us several years ago with the Montessori school. That's, that's why the Montessori school came here to begin with, to cut the budget.
Right.
Like, when did, when do you stop attacking the smaller schools and the smaller communities? That's, that's my frustration, like, it just seems like you're, you're, you're cutting your foot off, you know?
And, and I will say, looking at that, so the, the tax money, so that is protected in Tabor funds, which is about, I don't, I don't know what it stands for, something to do with tax, right? I'm trying to figure this all out, right? But it's like, of, yeah, of the, of the funding for the schools, that is a protected smaller amount. It might be a little less than a third of the district's budget. And so, that cannot be, like, that is like protected in some way, so they can't touch that for like savings. So, there is, there is some restrictions, right? There is some restrictions on what they can do with the tax money, is my understanding.
Even with that being said, the other money that comes in for the school, like, where, where did all the savings go from combining the high schools? Where's that money?
It's a, it's a great question. Like, why are we having to do this again?
Yeah.
Other than the fact that we have a three and a half, 3.6 million budget cut that might be coming down the line. It hasn't even been approved yet.
Why isn't the budget cut started at the top? Like, why are they not cutting budgets at this, the school board office?
The school board members asked that question at the working group, and there was no presentation about that. And they said, "Oh, we should look at that." They wanted to look at that. Hopefully, it will make it into the community meeting presentation, and if it doesn't, everyone should be standing up and asking that question. But why isn't there an audit happening? Why, why don't we just do an audit and say, "Oh, well, if the only way to make it work is that the two schools are extremely disruptive in their relocation, then maybe we'll have to come together and figure it out." But there's none of that data.
They relocated the whole school board office a few years ago to a nicer building.
Right.
Like, wasn't the whole building fine? Like, we've gotten less for a long time. Schools have done with less for Crawford, as it is.
Yeah. And I think we're the only town that doesn't have a board member who is from our town.
I believe, like, I'd have to look at the newspaper, but I believe the audit question was answered as a board member.
Oh, great.
I believe they decided it was too expensive to audit.
Does anyone do auditing and we could do it like for free? I'll figure it out. Alright, so we've got Liz and, oh, Ms. Shannon.
So, one thing, I just, I am a teacher at the Montessori, and one of the things that makes me nervous about the talk of student-teacher ratio is that, sorry. One of the things that concerns me about the conversation with student-teacher ratio is that we actually, as part of our school of innovation plan with the CDE, have a different student-teacher ratio for the Montessori teaching method. It requires at least two adults to be in a classroom. And for the entire time the Montessori school has been here, to my knowledge, that means that our teachers, even though we're part of the district and we're a public school, we make less money than teachers in other schools in the district knowingly, and that is because we have more assistants in our building. So, we have a teacher and an assistant in each classroom. And again, as a teacher in a Montessori school, we know that we need that extra person, and so we say, "We are doing this," and I know, you can look on the website at the teacher pay scales, if I took a teaching job in a different building in the district, I would make more money. But I believe in the Montessori method, and I think that it's really great for our students. So, when they start talking about student-teacher ratio and putting us in the same category as other schools in the district, that makes me nervous, because the success of our program really is tied to those numbers and to having the support that we have in our classrooms.
So good.
That's the reason what makes the Montessori so amazing, is your love for the education and your heart is in it for less.
Yeah. That's, why are they saying they're so expensive and they're just transporting?
Going back to your point about the, the different philosophies, I would be curious if there's any research been done on schools where schools with two different philosophies have been housed in the same building. Is there a potential for conflict between elementary school kids, staff, and even parents? And I, I think that ought to be assessed or looked into before a decision is made, and then you say, "What did we do?"
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, there's, there's very little literature on schools consolidating at all, and the studies that I have found looked at 19 schools that were consolidated, and they measured over three years, and they only found cost savings in administration, which would not be applicable to us because we would have two independent schools with separate administration. So, I, I don't know if that research exists, but I do think, and Jennifer McGavin, who is the North Fork Valley representative board member, mentioned at the working meeting that what will happen to the identity of the school, one school or the other is gonna be like this, you know, the stepchild coming into a new family, and the buildings are already prepared for, you know, one school, and how is that, there's one entrance and two schools, like, there's gonna be a lot of things to consider. So, I do know that the, our board member who represents us is thinking about that. So, and I think that that is a really good question to raise at the community meeting. Will you be there to ask that question? Super. The community meeting is next Tuesday, February 25th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the North Fork High School. Alright, and I think, oh yeah, and then Liz has been...
I, along with several other people here, went to school in Crawford 12 years. And historically, every time the district has to cut budget, Crawford goes first.
Okay. That, that needs to be mentioned at this meeting in front of everyone, and it can't be from me who just got here six months ago. So, please, please come and please speak up. I will stand next to you and hold your hand if you don't want to talk in front of people. I totally get it. Thank you for sharing that, yeah.
Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Heidrick. I own Needle Rock Mountain Realty. I raised four children. They all attended Crawford schools. My grandfather was the last principal in this school building and the first principal in the Montessori school building. When it switched to the Montessori school style of teaching, I was asked to speak, and I said, "As long as education was happening within these walls, my grandfather would be in support of it." I am adamant in that I will continue to try to do research and help our community to prove that the Crawford School is extremely vital and important to the health of our community. Our demographic has shifted significantly in the last 10 years. We have so many young families that have moved to this area specifically. I have, I'm, I'm working on gathering up letters. Unfortunately, a lot of them, their children are smaller, so they're not yet in the school system, but they have moved here with the intention of having their children attend Montessori school. I think this is really important. They made large life decisions, purchased property or building homes based on the quality of our school. We have to think strategically, though, because we don't necessarily have the numbers. I don't think this, the school district is ultimately the enemy. We are a victim of the system. And it's not like they want to be doing the politically incorrect thing by closing down the Montessori school. They don't. If, if everybody doesn't understand what's happening is, it's been proposed that instead of tallying the numbers as a total every fi, you explain that?
Yeah, we went through the whole background.
Alright, great. So, so that's fundamentally wrong. And that, that's something that we need to be reaching out at the state level and fighting. When does that decision come down? Do you know?
That is supposed to come down in May.
In May.
And I know that some of the board members at the working group were very, that were saying, "Listen, we, we jumped the gun previously, and the cuts weren't as bad." And they're like, "We don't want to do that again." So, yeah, they're coming down in May.
So, how can we, as the public, not just impacting our school district, but impacting our politicians, try to stop that from happening?
Yeah, at the beginning, I encourage everybody to call Governor Polis, and I have an example message in the community document. If you have signed in and given me your email, I will give you access to that community document where you, I mean, you can come up with your own.
Because I, I mean, if we can stop it there, then this problem starts to go away.
Absolutely.
The other thing is, we need our children back in the schools. There are too many people that are not trained to be educators, that are homeschooling their children for whatever reason that may be. And I do not stand in judgment of them. I stand in awe of them because I myself have a college education, but would not even begin to think that I could educate my children properly or socialize them properly. Now, the world is filled with strife, and I understand that that's one of the reasons why people have stepped away from public schools. But I speak to you now, if you're in this room, or you know somebody whose children are not attending public schools. Public schools are the fundamental thread of our society and the single most important thing that we have brought to our world with freedom of speech and in every other way as we educate our children. Please get them back into the schools. Save our schools, save our teachers, save our communities. Please, please. I mean, like, that, if the numbers are there, this also goes away. This is our other strategy to defeat this, is by getting our kids back into the schools.
Absolutely. And, and absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the solutions that we're looking at that is already in play is to like increase marketing efforts. And I am, will 100% volunteer to be an ambassador for the school to, because I'm somebody who used to have my kids in private school, and now I'm like, "No, this public school is the best thing that has ever happened to my child's education." And I will be an ambassador, and I'm sure there's tons of parents that will be, and to like hold meetings at the library or whatever, but like, we really do need the community, the town, to get behind the school, as amazing as it is, and to talk about it to all of our friends who are homeschooling. You can't force them to go, right? Like, we don't want to be like, you know, proselytizing in a, you know, disruptive way, but it is really important. At the board meeting, they said there are 230 children that they are aware of because they have to register to homeschool. And so, in the county, there are 230 children, but that's the whole county. How many would come to our school? We don't know. But listen, I heard Kurt Clay, the assistant superintendent, say, "When a school gets below 100 students, it starts becoming inefficient." We are at 92. Now, we can bring that many people in. Like, there are kids who are going on buses to Hotchkiss that maybe don't know that Montessori is free or amazing, right? Like, if I have to go door-to-door, I will. I will have a panic attack on the way there, but, you know, like, that, that is, I think you're exactly right, Liz. So, I, I think we, that is one of the biggest things that the community can start doing right now, regardless of how much time we get, is to like talk up the school, talk to folks who are homeschooling, talk to folks in your church, you know, do, do whatever needs to happen. I, I'm new, I don't know where they are. So, we need the community to come together. Ms. Kami, oh, okay, alright.
I just wanted to say, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I loved the comment about searching studies on two schools in a same building, but I believe the district has already tried this within Peonia... But I believe the district has already tried this within Peonia Elementary when NIFSS was in that building. And I believe I have spoken to quite a lot of staff that said it did not work the first time when that happened. So why would it work with us, two totally completely different philosophies? So I would be happy to ask some of those other teachers that
Super.
I've, I've worked alongside or at least just know.
Let's get that, that data, because, yeah.
You know, I taught at Montessori many years and was so thankful to be there and really just feel strongly.
Hang on, hang on, let me get you the microphone.
I, I want to add to what Deanna said because I was a kitchen staff at the school. I was a lunch lady for five years. I talked to other lunch ladies that worked. We, we have lunch lady meetings, you know, once a month, and we would talk. And, and I'm not discrediting what the NIFSS school does. I don't know what they do. I don't know their, their teaching platform or, but I know, talking to the other lunch ladies, that they, they don't communicate with the rest of the school. So there was a lot of times the kids didn't get lunch because they don't put in a lunch count. And I know that's not, that's not like the most important thing, but kids can't learn if they don't eat. And if you don't give a count, if you don't communicate with the rest of the staff, it's not going to work. So I do comment on that, just on that basis alone. I know for a fact that they had trouble with that school communicating with the rest of the staff. So I, I do agree with that.
Next.
I teach at the school and I got raised in England, but I'm American. And I came to America at thirteen and fell in love with the public school system here because it's the great equalizer. And they don't have that in England. And all I know is we treat every child as a child of God. We have kids there, you guys, that just in this past year have lost parents. We have kids, I can't get into details, but their lives are not good. And what Liz said, if the wider community would understand that, send your kids, let them be ambassadors. I cried to my parents when I was a kid. I said, I don't want to go to school. And my dad said, but you're going there to bring goodness into other kids' lives. He kind of reset it for me. Instead of me thinking about what it was doing for me, he had me think about, and me and all my siblings, there was a bunch of us, to go in and bring goodness into it. And that helped me a lot. And if y'all can talk to your community members and let them know Liz is right. Crawford deserves a school, but it's also kind of on Crawford to send kids there. That's, it's, and if it does close, the, the Montessori will continue, but it won't be here. That's what's so sad. And Crawford does have taxpayers, has good people, and deserves a public school. That's all there is to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Just making sure, Liz and Kami, are you coming to the meeting next week? Good, wonderful. Thank you. All right, we just want to, we can take a couple more questions also, but we all.
Well, I just, I have a quick statement.
Okay, all right.
I find it problematic that the school that performs the best on the standardized testing is the one that's picked out to move, number one. Number two, they do that on, with a handicap in that they don't receive the same funding per pupil that the rest of the district does. I just, you know, my wife and I moved here over forty years ago when the school was brand-new. And that made a difference in why we moved here, you know? And you said that there's two hundred and what number of students in Delta County that don't attend the school?
Two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, well, I read the paper and sometimes not very well. But a lot of, a lot of this enrollment problems that the school district is having is from shooting themselves in the foot with other policies that they say they have to introduce, but I don't think they do. And so parents are making the choice, which, hey, that's what they, you know. I had five kids, four great kids go to school up there. And a lot of times when we called up there, they were sorry that we were because they didn't want to talk to us. But for the most part. Anyway.
Yeah.
The school, I mean, I know there's the separation argument, but the school is as important to a community as a church or a grocery store or a post office or anything else.
Yeah. Amen. And somebody wrote on the petition that we saw earlier. Thank you, yeah. That the, a town without a school dies a slow and painful death, like, right? Like, it is so important. And to the policy comment, our teachers, like, do not bring any, any weird, anything into the classroom. They, it is so, every child gets to have whatever beliefs they have and they are honored. And it's like, there is, there is nothing that is being put on our kids. At our school, I know that for sure. I have seen that. They are, our teachers are absolutely amazing.
And I believe that at the Montessori, they welcome parents to come into the schools and be a part of it.
Yes, yes.
You don't see that.
It's encouraged, yes.
It's encouraged. It's, it's something that they want.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much for your concerns. So we've got them down. We also have it recorded. And I encourage you, all, all of your points are so good and like, and also so different than some of the ones that have been brought up. So please come, please make your voices heard at the community meeting because together it's a really good, I don't know, argument. But, you know, it, it, it's just stating that, you know, there are things going on that are, that you don't see in the numbers and that really do matter. And I think, you know, the board members are the ones who are voting and they're humans. They want to do the right thing. Like, they're all sitting there and like I said, I said earlier, like, nobody wants to do this. Like, they want to see good data for this, too. Like, I, I was really impressed at the working group of like how the board members were really considering so many different factors about this. Like, I felt confident that they were going to move in the right direction. Now, they could, I, I don't know what they're going to ultimately do when it comes down to voting, but I, I was encouraged at this meeting that, that they don't want to do this willy-nilly and that they are really considering all of the information that's coming through. Some of them are really for school choice. Some of them are really for alternative education. Some of them really don't want to see what happened with Peonia and Hotchkiss and North Fork High School happen again. You know, like, they still feel bad about it, like, years later. Like, they're writing me to respond to my many emails saying how, like, they're not feeling, like, they really regret that that was so difficult on the community. Before we take anything else, I want to, to pass two more things around. Thank you for your patience with all this. It's like, can you imagine? I'm at home with a child vomiting, trying to get all these things together today. No, he was vomiting yesterday. Just so, there's no vomit on this. So there are two things, two things I'm going to send around here, all right? So one is a task force signup. What I would love to do is I've got you all who is here. We're going to say, X number of people came to this meeting and, and from the community who are parents or who are teachers, who are community members, are willing to join to, on a task force to collaborate with the board to come up with solutions if we can have this year-long evaluation period. And so we want to do this proactively. We don't know if they're going to do this, but why not show up with a list of names that we are ready and willing to work and come up with solutions? So I'm going to pass around something that says, Task Force Signup Sheet. This asks for your name and town, it may be relevant, your email address, and, and I won't spam you, and your relevant skills, knowledge, or experience. Like, we have a wonderful gentleman and parent, David Jacobson, who is recording this for all of us, for all the parents who couldn't make it tonight. And like, that is a skill set that I cannot do. Like, I can barely, you know, get my computer to record something. So everyone's coming with something different. You have past experience and we, we want to bring in people. Maybe you can't make it to every meeting. Maybe you phone into some meetings, but we're going to pass that around. And thank you, Dominic's got a pen. And then we also have another thing. So there is strength in numbers. NIFSS does not want to move, and they don't want us to have to move either. Like, we are on the same page where we think that our schools thrive in their own towns and that they bring value to the town. So I know that the Montessori school brings new families in. I am one of them, right? I know of others who are, you know, have property here who are planning on moving to get their kids in our school. I also know that the NIFSS school brings families into Peonia. People come. There are people who have moved here from Europe because there are only a couple Waldorf-inspired schools. So I've talked to parents there, too. It's very similar. It's just a different, you know, it's a different philosophy. We are on the same page in that the two schools want our kids and our schools to stay in our own towns. And so we have a lot of shared interests. Crawford has, you know, we have our own concerns that we are going to continue to fight for. And if you are interested, and, and this, you know, may not be relevant to you, but if you are interested in like contributing to, how can we encourage alternative education to thrive in our own towns? And how can we come together? I'm putting, I'm just going to put around another interest signup sheet for collaborating with NIFSS. And if that, it doesn't feel good to you, that's fine. And that may be more relevant to parents or to, to staff and that's fine. So I'm just going to pass that around so that we have access to that because there is a petition out there. So we have our Crawford petition, which is to keep the school in Crawford. There, and that is still going around. Does anybody else need it? Thank you. We'll take it. I know, I've already had eighty-eight signatures prior to today. So that's awesome. Yeah, I know. I, I want, Crawford has shown up. And you know who has shown up the most is the ladies at the bank have got a ton of signatures. I'm like, they really showed up. They called me yesterday, or was it Friday, when the snowstorm and the hail was coming and I walked down there to get them? They, they really showed up. So the town of Crawford has shown up for the school. And I think that that is the most important part of our petition is that we're like, hey, we're paying attention and we have some pushback. The pushback is really important because it was stated at the board meeting. There's another school in Delta called DALL. I don't remember what it stands for. Delta something.
Delta Academy of Applied Learning.
Delta Academy of Applied Learning. Thank you, Ms. Kami. So it is a contract school. It teaches the same curriculum. It's not like it's a special alternative school. But they are going to get absorbed into the district and they didn't push back. But they, they're fine with it. But it was stated in the meeting, there wasn't any pushback. So they're going to move forward. Our pushback is really important, our respectful pushback, remembering that we're talking to humans. We want to see the data, yeah, but we want to be respectful so that our, so that we're heard, right? We can be mad and do whatever on our own time. But, but they are paying attention to the pushback. We went from the vote may be two days after the meeting to it's not happening this month. We went from, oh, this, the proposal is we're going to, we're going to consolidate to, oh, we're looking at all of the options still, to now on the table is let's wait a year. Like, our pushback is really, really being effective. So I want to encourage everybody to take your concerns that you have mentioned here today, take them to the meeting, take them to an email to the superintendent and the board members. If you just email the superintendent, I do believe she will get it to the board members, but you might as well just copy them. All right, hang on.
On the note about attending the meeting and emailing too? I know I personally, I'm, I'm unfortunately not able to attend next week's meeting. I'm just not in town. I have emailed the board. I've asked, I emailed them. And in my email, I addressed, I can't attend the meetings. I won't be there. And I've asked for my comments to be read into the record or to be shared in whatever method is most appropriate. So if you guys can't make the meeting, whether it's impossible or you just can't for whatever reason, please still email, ask for your comments to be read. Ask that your feelings be shared, even if you can't be there. Your opinion matters just as much as those that can be there. And we should make sure that all of our comments get recorded.
It is the twenty-fifth, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. And I, at the North Fork High School. And I want to say to add this, I, I noticed and I, people may not know this. Your emails, the subject of your emails, the subject of your phone calls becomes a matter of public record on the board's agenda. At the end of every board agenda, there is a list of everyone that has contacted them. Because I saw the last meeting and I saw my email there, which was a request for information. And I was like, it was a request for information that was in opposition of the thing. But I didn't say I oppose this in the request for information. So I have to rewrite them and say, I oppose the relocation. So make sure your email subject lines are clear and communicate what you want as well as the content of your email, but it becomes public record. So even, you know, even if you can't make it, it will become public record. And so there are some things that we can do if we don't like the decision. And so we can go back to that. If there are like a hundred emails that come in saying like, we oppose this, we want a year to wait a year, it's so effective. So even if you feel like it doesn't matter, you're just a community member, you're not a parent, please email because it's so important and it becomes public record. It actually does matter. It may not nationally, but it does here.
I think we had another comment.
I'd like to see an itemization from the board on the remodeling, the recertifying, the rebranding, the re, everything that they're going to do and see how much money that saves.
So on all these things, too, where we keep saying, we have these questions, but we don't have the answers. I wish I had this. Email them, email them, email them, email them. Ask them. If we have questions that we don't have answers to, ask them, ask again. And we'll ask at the meeting. And if we don't get them, you know, we'll ask again later. You know, we're, don't, we have a lot of questions here that we don't have the answers to. And we should make it very clear that we want the answers to these questions.
Will they provide an opportunity for public comment?
They sure will. The presentation was maybe thirty minutes? Yeah, so, okay, so we're going to do this and then I, and then we'll have this question over here. And then I would love to come back together to talk about maybe some solutions. We've been focused on issues. We have a few ideas for solutions. I just want to hear like what, what is, yes. I have been talking without a microphone.
Well, it's fine. It's just for the folks that are here. Go.
So you've done a bunch of research on schools moving and everything. Throughout that research, have you found what percentage of students no longer go to the school that just moved? So if the Montessori moves to Peonia, for example, how many parents or people are going to, you know, send their kid to Hotchkiss instead of to Peonia?
That is a slippery slope, my friend. Yes. So that is a huge concern because it, it is just a concern.
So have you seen anything in your research that, you know, you said you looked at two schools that moved, was there any percentage of drop-off or increase when that school was?
Yeah, the enrollment does get a little bit more volatile, so it does change. But they haven't focused on, the research is so, I mean, this is like, very few people are doing this research and some of it's from the nineteen nineties. So the nineteen hundreds, but most of us were born then, right? So, yeah, I haven't seen anything like that. I have talked to community members, though, and I know that, you know, there are, there are lots of thoughts and feelings about what will happen if the school moves. And I said to, because after the board meeting, I had a brief one-on-one with the superintendent and assistant superintendent. And I was like, listen, you know, people are going to give up on public education altogether. You know, that's what's going to happen and that people are going to homeschool. People are going to start voting for school vouchers. You're going to start seeing these microschools, which I have been a part of in another state that had vouchers and, you know, it's a hot mess. And like, the school, the, the, the quality of the schools is quite variable, shall we say. And, you know, that, it, it's going to be detrimental to public education, right? So I, I think they're aware of it, like, based on the facial expression of the superintendent when I was saying that, you know, like, but it's.
My example would be, we moved our daughter to Hotchkiss for a year.
Yeah.
And she hated it.
Yeah.
She was crying every time she went to the classroom. She refused to go in. It took forever. And anybody here who knows my kids, she loves school.
Right.
Like, it's one of her favorite places to be.
Yeah.
And she refused to go into that school.
Wow. Yeah. That's a good testimony. You should write that to the board. Like, the same also. You didn't.
Hazel Clark donated the land for the school. And if the school ever closes, the Clarks get that land back.
Hey, that's a good point. All right, we need that documented. Does anybody have, do we have documents?
Liz can find it. All right. Pardon me?
I think it came up in the past.
It came up in the past? That's a good point.
If, if it closes down, the clerks got the land back.
Okay.
Isn't that similar to the Peonia library? Wasn't that part of why the Peonia library ended up being that?
I'm not gonna remember. Yeah. All right, that comment needs to come. So the, the clerks own the land, they donated it to the school, and that should go back to them.
It's not used for education. I think it's supposed to revert back to the clerks.
And I would think that they would have some say over what they think is education. I mean, you know, their education, yeah, could be defined in multiple ways. All right. This gentleman over here has been waiting so patiently.
Yeah, I'm David Justice. I wanted to, there was a mention earlier of contacting the governor, but I want everybody to know that this thing is still in committee.
Yeah.
So rather than contact the governor, which you could, I would also encourage you to contact the committee that's discussing this budget, which is, you know, to nip it right in the bud. So this thing is still undecided, and there, and apparently the committee is at odds with the governor. So the more we can turn those two against each other and let them work it out at that level of government, you know, there might, uh, they might be more apt to listen to a small town.
And this lo, this lovely screen that you have here, does it list the committee members' names and email addresses? And could you send that to me? I will send them out. That's great. Yeah, we gotta push on the right buttons. Thank you so much. Hope everybody gave your emails.
I just would tag on to what I've heard in, from a couple of people. Hetty and the educator in the back that, um, early childhood educator, that talked about how many community members have done, helped keep that school going in, in many different ways. And financially, um, I had not heard that, the one that Hetty just mentioned. But I know that one, um, community member built the library. And then there was a lot that helped to get it going when it became a Montessori. And I, so I think the community members have a lot of investment in a lot of ways. And I think we'll see them all come out.
Yes. I, I think that's so important because it just goes to show that a school is, the school is part of the community, and the community is part of the school. There's a reciprocal relationship. The school helps the community to bring people in, to have jobs, and to get more people to come into town and spend money in town. And people have really committed to the school. And that would just get thrown away. Yeah, that's tragic.
I haven't heard you bring up the Vision School. In my opinion, that is another alternative school. And I would just be curious, why did the school district enter into a five-year contract with them? And now they're looking at combining two other alternative schools? I don't see the practicality or the reasoning behind that. And that would be something I would like to bring up at the community meeting. And then also, have they even looked at, I mean, the PK eight is out of the former Peonia High School. I would think there would be plenty of room to add an alternative school in that building.
Yeah. I mean, I have, I have no idea about that, but that, that would be preferable to relocating and taking a town's only school away from it, yes. Now, they didn't bring up Vision Charter Academy, that I can recall. I mean, I'm taking screenshots while I'm sitting in the back of the room and not allowed to talk. But I didn't see anything about cuts on the Vision Charter Academy. I, I see that a lot of money has been put into that. I just don't know about it. So it's a very good question to bring up, especially if that's not part of the presentation. So please, please do bring that. You guys have like the most amazing questions. All right. Um, so we wanna, just to briefly, I, we don't wanna keep everybody here all night, right? I would like to kiss my child goodnight before we go home. Um, so, uh, we're looking at how can we, what can we do as a community to help keep the school here? We're really hoping that we can push for a year, but it's gonna be a push. I can't push like as hard as I've been pushing for a whole year. Like, we need the whole community to come together, right? And so we're looking at what can we do? And so, um, you know, there are just ideas that have come around. I think one of the key ones is increasing enrollment, and we've already talked about that. Talking about the quality of the school, talking about what the Montessori method is, and if you don't know, learning about it. And maybe some of us can like go learn and do research and then start to educate the community. And I would definitely be willing to be part of that. But talking to your neighbors who are homeschooling, your community members, those who are sending their kids to Hotchkiss and who may be crying on the way and hating school, but, you know, they could come to our school, and maybe they would love it, like so many of our kids do, you know? Um, so that's one thing. Other things are like, yeah, we just wanna hear, like, what are your ideas of like, how can the community support the school? Of course, there's fundraising. Um, fundraising for teacher positions is like kind of tricky. And the district, I don't think particularly loves that. Um, but fundraising for other things could be something. As a former college educator, like I worked for a college, not a university. Colleges have things called endowment funds, right, or endowments, that like the money is donated by community members or alumni or alumna, and then that money is invested. And, you know, you get returns on it. Not that I could do that, cause I have no idea like anything about cryptocurrency or any of that. But I bet somebody does. And so there could be some fundraising things that we do that are for things that maybe aren't staff positions. Maybe we can do it for staff positions. We can take advantage of volunteers to come in and do like maintenance stuff. Like, people have a lot of skills and experience, you know? We're just trying to come up with ideas. And so you as community members, or even as teachers, or, you know, like what you would love to see if you feel like talking. There is absolutely no pressure for any teacher to speak here. Um, but like, what are some ideas that you have that could support this? Cause I know y'all saved the library. So I know you guys can rally, me included. I'm just, I wasn't here for that, right? Like, I'll, I'll rally with you. But, you know, what, what, what are your ideas to come together and support the school? Beyond trying to increase enrollment and talking to other community members?
It's a public school. So how would we go about being able to do anything along those lines anyway? Where it doesn't get dispersed into the entire school district?
Well, we have a nonprofit, and so does NIFSS. We have nonprofits. And so those funds that come in, I do believe are specified for certain things. And so it's a public-private partnership that we already have. And our nonprofit could be underutilized, right? And so, yeah, we would have to make sure that things come in with specifications on how they're used. And so that would be like, oh, the board doesn't get to do this. The district has that, too. They have grants that come in. They have bonds that are being used that cannot be transferred to other things. And so it would be that kind of situation. So we, we are already set up with a nonprofit that we have parents who are working on. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but we are set up so that they can't just siphon that off. Is my understanding, yes. Hang on, Miss Kami.
It helps disadvantaged students of, of whom we have quite a few to go skiing. They do that four times a year and an end-of-year field trip. So that's, that's what the nonprofit was set up for, and it works really well.
It works really well. And so maybe it can work even better. Yeah. Uh, okay, Dominic, who's it got back there? And it helps with professional development. That's great, right? So, so it's something that we could feed more into. The community can come together, right? We can make some, I know, it's like, who has a lot of extra money right now? Not everyone, but, you know, there, some people might.
With, with the district commenting on how much it would save them in transportation and bus, can it be fundraised for the transportation?
That is a great question. Can, and I'm just, for everybody, can, can fundraising happen for transportation? Because that may be, cause I have heard multiple times that we are an expensive school, but I'm like, but the teachers are making less. So where, where are we expensive? That's a really good question. I have seen in my research that some districts have added a transportation fee for students. And, you know, for us, you know, with some folks who are disadvantaged or at risk, I think it could be a fee that may be optional, where, you know, some of us like, I don't have, I wouldn't need transportation cause my son walks to school. I would happily pay transportation fees into a fund so that it would cover people who can't, right? I think we would have a lot of community members who would do that. And so I think that is a really good idea. And I have seen that districts have enacted that. It's a requirement, but if we did it as part of a fundraising, I think that's a really good way for the community to get involved.
There was a time in Montessori history that we paid for our bus.
Yeah.
So I would say, I would say that that could be a viable thing, that we could help as families and community members and.
Yeah. I think the only thing I would wanna do is protect the disadvantaged students who are already having a hard time getting to the school. And those of us who can, could, you know, pay more perhaps to provide for that, you know, coming together as a community.
My question relating to that, to the transportation, how many kids are bussed to Crawford for the school every day? Like, from Peonia or from Hotchkiss? How many kids are bussed to here?
Including the preschool, they have it in the numbers that I have a screenshot of that we'll see. They have thirty-seven coming from Hotchkiss.
Okay.
Thirty-nine coming from Peonia, and thirty-nine coming from Crawford. And Crawford has some walkers.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they show from Crawford to Hotchkiss? Cause there's a bunch of kids there that get on the bus.
There are forty-two kids in Crawford who go to, I'm like, can't believe I have this memory. Forty-two kids who live in Crawford who go to Hotchkiss for school, but they did not break it down for elementary, preschool, kindergarten, middle school, or high school.
Thirty-nine one way, forty-two the other way. It seems like a fairly reasonable reason to have a bus transport.
Yeah, yeah. Right, I know, it's where it starts. I, yeah, yeah. The bus, bus things are confusing.
So to add into the busing from the other towns, too, we're busing preschoolers from Peonia and Hotchkiss? We don't even bus Crawford preschoolers to the school. It's not an option. So.
Really?
No, no. Which is, I mean, I'll drive my kid to school. It's not a big deal. But we're, all this talk about transportation, we don't even transport our own preschoolers to school right now.
So.
There's room on the bus.
Well, that's, that's not the issue. The issue is we don't have a proper liaison or, I don't, the proper term to ride with them.
Staff rides the bus with the kids who are preschoolers.
Staff rides the bus with?
As monitors.
From, from.
From Peonia and from Hotchkiss.
So if you live in Peonia, you ride the bus in with them?
Well, not a, staff takes turns. They take turns.
So the district doesn't bus preschoolers to school. We have an unusual bus. The rest of the district, they don't get that.
Interesting. You get paid for that, right? Part of the day. So it wouldn't be cost savings to have parents get trained to do that, to do, yeah.
But, but to add to this, we don't know what, what that means for preschoolers if they have to go to Peonia. You know, maybe we'll have a staff member, or maybe someone knows the answer. Maybe there'll be a staff member from Crawford that will ride with them to Peonia. But that's not guaranteed. These preschoolers can get to school today because it's in their town.
There are staff members willing to ride the bus. I can confirm that.
Well, yeah.
That's a really good point. Right, and it, all right, so, yeah.
There's also, as far as I understand, the North Fork Montessori pays a fee to the district for the bus that comes from Peonia and from Hotchkiss.
That's interesting.
From our budget.
Okay. This is, this is why we need the actual transparent cost analysis, which doesn't look, I don't, maybe they're gonna come up with something new. I mean, I saw the presentation last Thursday, and I don't know if they're working this week on it. But all of these numbers, all of these things are really good questions. And so, um, they're good questions to ask when they bring up transportation in the meeting. Will you be there or comfortable to ask that question? Like, or we can find that information out, right? So these are really key questions because I don't think the transportation is as simple or as clear-cut as they're saying it will be. And I think this is why there is research that says, oh, hey, consolidation of schools actually doesn't save that much money when you actually look at it over time. And it is extremely disruptive. And they know it's disruptive, cause they are, they were already aware of all the research of like, there is a dip when kids go from elementary school to middle school. There just is, cause it's a huge transition, right? And so they're aware of that research. They know it's gonna be disruptive.
So the, the bus drivers aren't part of the support staff. They are paid through the school because of the, their support staff. Like lunch ladies or bus drivers are support staff. They're, I, I know the transportation, like the bus costs, like the upkeep of a bus is not. But like, the bus drivers themselves are usually paid, they're employed through the school individually, I believe. I may be wrong, but I don't, I think when I talked to the three now that she worked here, like the school bus drivers are paid to the school because they're employed there.
Okay. I mean, that's good, that's good information because there's another thing, and you can see it for yourself in the budget. So like, the board is gonna give a big budget of like, we have all this money and like, we have to dip into our savings account. By the way, the savings account will still have three and a half million dollars in it, it, with all of the cuts that are happening. And there's a ten percent contingency fund. So, um, we're not talking about the, the district going into debt if we don't relocate. So, um, there, there is that. So just pay attention when they're gonna, they, they're gonna give a lot of numbers. So it's worthy of like, looking at that, like, oh, is it worth having, like, what are they gonna save? Are we gonna have three-point-six million dollars in the savings? And we're gonna disrupt this for all of our staff, for a community? And then we're gonna, you know, for all of our students to save what, a hundred thousand dollars?
Is that what it boils down to, with eight kids?
I don't know.
Because you said there's ninety-two in the school.
I don't know. He said, he said it starts getting really hard to make a case for the school being efficient under a hundred. I don't know that that's like, if they'll stay off our back if we keep over a hundred, but like, it will help. Yeah.
Would that be part of the job of the board and the school themselves to be helping get admission above a hundred in all the dis, or in all the schools?
Yeah.
Is that kinda part of what their job is?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Cause I was asking like, well, what happened? Like, what happened when the Montessori school came into Crawford? Like, I said, you guys didn't do a very good job of, um, I don't know, PR to get the school to really integrate into the community. I'm like, and it didn't seem like they, I, I don't know. I don't, I wasn't here, so I don't know what they did. But, um, and I don't know what they're doing to try to recruit homeschoolers either. So it's a really good question. It's like, where's the board's support been for increasing enrollment? Because it's not just the North Fork Valley. In fact, North Fork Valley's decrease in enrollment is smaller than every other school's. We have the smallest decrease. Which is, it's like one percent compared to point eight percent. But still, but still, you know? It's, it's a trend, though. And we are a school, our school, Montessori school, is projected to have an increased number of students next year. Ninety-four compared to ninety-two. And the other schools are not necessarily. So it's like, okay, you know, things are going there. And, and this is why Liz had to go. But like, I really appreciate Liz, cause I've reached out to her, and I'm talking to other people, like, if you know folks that moved here for the school, this is a really good talking point because they're looking at birth rates to say how the enrollment is going to go. But birth rates are not how we're getting more students necessarily. We are getting people who are moving here. And so if we can collect that data, that's really good. So if you talk to somebody, a family, and they moved here for the school, like, send me an email so that I can start tallying that up. Liz is looking for that data, too. I think that will be really useful because that's one way that our enrollment is going up, that they're not taking into account. Yeah, it's time to wrap it up, huh? Yeah. All right. If you have any more ideas, okay, one more, one more.
I would like to thank you very much for your presentation. It's so important to know the facts upfront instead of the rumor mill. And I can tell you, this community is very resilient, and it comes together. And in, I have been involved in more saving the community efforts. And we've done it, and we can do it again if we work together. So thank you for your leadership.
I do know that this community is resilient and super independent and super like, wanna do it on your own. And that is why I'm such a good fit for this community. And that is why I'm such a good fit for this community. I love it, that's exactly how I am. I'm so glad to be part of this community. Thank you so much for everyone showing up and for all of the, the help. Thank you, Chana, for all of your help getting me set up with this, cause I had no idea what I'm doing. Right, so good, thank you. And I wanna thank, Dominic has been like in the, the back, and so has another parent on the PTO, Claire Polkrock, has been working constantly to make sure that I'm staying on track before I'm communicating with people. And so I just wanna say that they have been absolutely essential, as have some of the staff.
And they're both busy working moms.
That is right. All right. Thank you all. If you have any questions, send me an email. I will be happy to facilitate whatever is needed. Thank you.